We have three sets of minutes. We have the May 12th board meeting that included a public hearing. We have the May 22nd workshop meeting, and we have the May 30th emergency workshop meeting. Anybody have any questions? Oh, and actually, just to start, I am now, I've been in the past asking for a motion and a second to then have discussion, but it, that's sort of Robert Rules of Order, which we're not required to follow, I don't believe. So it makes a lot more sense to have questions and discussion before we move to motion. So I'm going to switch, and when I forget, you will remind me.
Great.
Just because I think that's a more logical way for us to, for us to proceed. So, that being said, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the, about the minutes?
No.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve all three. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Last chance for edits. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is New York Class. So New York Class is a, let me read what it says. The Treasurer, Mary Beth Heath Phillips, our Controller, Michelle Zaborski and I met with a representative from New York Class. It is a New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Securities System. It's an opportunity for us to, short-term, invest our funds that we have. It is not invested in the stock market. Every dollar has collateral, and the timing is frankly daily. So you can put in today and take out tomorrow. So it's completely liquid. If you look, there is, and it has a governing board. One of the things that I found reassuring is one of the people on the governing board is Karen McLaughlin, who's the Treasurer of the Village of Frankton. And there are many, many municipalities who participate in this system or this investment opportunity. And what I am asking for this evening is approval to use it. We're planning to try it first to get used to it, but if you think about it, we're in the process of receiving all of our tax, our tax payments, and then it's over the year that we, that we spend that down. And so right now, it's literally sitting in a checking account, and it's really, I think it's receiving minimal interest. So it feels like a real missed opportunity for us to not be, to not be participating. So I have a resolution. This, my, New York Class, school districts, as well as OCs, cities, towns, villages, and counties, and districts, all have the capacity to participate. So Jen's getting the resolution number? Before I read the resolution, does anybody have any questions?
I do. Yeah. So it would be basically like us taking the tax money that we have, that's just sitting there until we spend it, and then we put that lump sum in. It's not like we'd be doing, like, a certain fund.
So there are, there are a couple of things that we, we've talked about.
Yeah.
If you think about our reserve funds, for example, they are sitting in an account. They are getting some interest, but not a lot.
Yeah.
We've talked about taking our largest reserve fund, for example, and effectively putting it all into New York Class. Because, and from my standpoint, we can't take, we can't just randomly take out from the reserve fund. We have to go through a process.
Yeah.
So this way, we know in advance that we need it, but again, we can say today, I want X dollars in the account tomorrow.
Yeah.
And actually, I think if you do it in the morning, you can have it by afternoon, if I remember correctly. I don't ever want to go there.
Yeah.
Like for payroll. So the idea would be, we can choose how much money. So right now, the tax money is sitting in our general fund account. And so it's whatever, I think it'll take a little bit of time to get comfortable with the right amount.
Yeah.
But a chunk of that money, we could put into the R-Class, and then as it gets closer to needing, it can be pulled back in.
Is it insured? Is there like a?
So, yes. And where, let's see. New York Class invests public sector funds only in securities legally permitted under US GML. New York Class and New York Class Prime, just for counties, are both rated AAAM by S&amp;P Global Rating, audited annually by an independent outside auditing firm. Only designated officials make enough transactions, and funds may be transferred only to previously authorized bank accounts. And it's, yeah, let's see, that convenience of ability to competitive returns.
Will this show what the portfolio allocation is?
Yes. You've got US Treasuries.
Treasury.
Collateralized bank deposits, FDIC insured bank deposit accounts, and repurchase agreement. So it is, again, it's not in the stock market, so it is not at the whim of.
Yeah.
The ups and downs.
And then how many other local municipalities do we know that are interested?
So there are approximately 1,640 participants.
Okay.
There is a chart that shows, yeah, sure, here, there, quantity. So there's, the largest portion are municipality, largest number.
Yeah.
The largest volume of money is school districts.
Yeah. Who are smart. Used to be on the, on the board. Oh, interesting.
Who did?
Who was smart.
Oh.
All right.
All right.
Used to be on the board of.
As she said, yeah.
Right. So it, it, it seems as, it's something that I know, I've been, you know, I get their, their info, and it feels very, feels very appropriate and responsible to be, you know, because with a CD, it could be three months, it could be six months. This way, you don't have to do that. And there's so many other municipalities that are using it. It feels like something that's really set up for exactly what, what we're looking for.
So if you, sorry to, if I'm interrupting anybody, so if we enroll in this, then what we do with it, we'll make decisions on later? It would just be for?
So the way I, what I, what I, what I'm not, and here, we should talk about it. The way I have written the resolution is that I, Mary Beth, and Michelle Zaborski, our Controller, would be authorized signers. And we've talked about creating a policy as to how it would work. And what we had talked about was that one person would initiate, and another would have to approve. The, there is in the, in the documents, there's, you can have dual approval through their system. They said that most municipalities don't do that, but I think we can have a paper trail that shows that there's an approval, there's a secondary approval, that just doesn't require to go through their system for the secondary approval.
But like the main decision on whether or not we use, like, a specific with our fund, or we use the taxpayer, you know, money that we're, would be done the policy that we're going to do, or no, that would just?
I think that, I think, the idea is that any, any funds that are available could be put into New York Class. If you would prefer that we address that differently, we can certainly do that. This is new for all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Reserve funds are not, first degree, being not available.
They're not, they're not immediately available. And, I mean, they are available for the purpose for which the funds were created, but even in that case, we have to, depending on how the fund was set up, we may have to have a public hearing in thirty days.
That's what I meant, if they're, if they're.
Yeah, as late as the process.
Not convenient.
Correct. It's all the more reason for it to be earning, earning interest while, while we're, we're going out to.
Wait, so we would be putting in reserves?
No. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. But then, does that not obligate us to the money that the reserve money makes go back to that reserve?
I'm not sure how that works. Can find out. I would assume so.
Yeah, I think that's.
Because that would be logical.
Yeah, I think it could.
Yeah, I would think so. Unless it's slightly less restricted, but I don't know why. And frankly, it's all good. I mean, we've made reserves, and if we just have more than.
I just think that that, like, if we made money off of general account fund balance, that could then be allocated following the process for a different reserve, but not, like, if we just say, need a building or a roof eventually, or something, we could use this as income.
We, we could choose to do that.
Right.
Ultimately, it will end up being a revenue line in the, in each of the funds. So the way this would work is we would set up, we would set up the, the big account, if you will. And then we would have sub-accounts for every account we have. So we'd have, there'd be a general account, sub-fund, there'd be a, there would be a sewer fund of, my brain is going.
Water fund, thank you.
And then each of the reserves would have their own separate sub-fund.
Great. So this is just, that I understand, this is us saying that we're moving forward, we're doing it, and then you guys as a team, a financial team, you will start applying this to the ones that you are able to do? Or is it something that's going to come back to the board as we go through every single?
So it can go either way?
Yeah.
And if we, I mean, if, if, if we approve this, we could put all of our, I mean.
Tomorrow, you could do that.
We could.
Technically, if you're allowed to, because there's reserve fund issues.
Yeah. And then I think the reserve fund, we may have to, I have to check with the village attorney as to whether or not we need a resolution, and we get from one bank to another, which is probable. Excess funds, I mean, so for example, so our, our three major funds are with KeyBank, and we're not ever going to not use KeyBank, because we have to write checks and all of that. So we will always have a balance with KeyBank and payroll. And we've got a couple of accounts, and we also have the health reserve accounts in there, too.
Does cash flow wise, does it make it more complicated for the accountant to do things? Or is it just, no?
It's really just making sure that you're aware of your cash flow. I don't think the, our intention is definitely not to hold it tightly.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is that, I'm thinking that we should amend the resolution to say that we're authorized to register the village, and that we will return with a policy. Because I think, I think it would make sense to have a policy that lays out how we transfer funds, when we do, how, you know, I think, you know, we were very excited about the opportunity.
Yeah.
And I threw something together, and I think, you know, the process of, and maybe included in that would be limited, in terms of, you know, we would never go below X months' expenses, or something like that. And then I can find out from the, from the village attorney what the process is for transferring the, the reserve funds, because we probably do, we probably can't just do that. We probably have to have a, a resolution saying, yes, we can go from this bank to that bank.
All right. So we would effectively then have an investment policy, and then secondary to that, a New York Class procedure?
We already have an investment policy.
As I said, we have an investment policy, so we would, we would have a New York Class policy. And I'll have to look and see how that would incorporate into the investment policy.
And the investment policy, is that in the code?
Yes.
Can I ask one thing about their immediate typo? But did they address why in their end of market field, "May" is less than June? In terms of?
Is that a year ago?
Yeah, but it's not that, like, every, it increases steadily, so the longer you keep it in, your yield is higher, unless you keep it in past June.
No, I don't think so. It's not, it's. This is the daily, so the yield is related to the interest rate of the fund. So it goes this way.
Ah, okay.
So the interest rate has actually reduced, so when the, when the Federal Reserve reduces the interest rate, they reduce the interest rate that we, that the yield that we get.
Got it.
That's actually.
I thought it was, that's, the percentage was your yield at the moment?
No, unfortunately, that, that's the interest rate that you get for each of those at the month. What they did say was, when the federal interest rate goes up, they almost immediately increase theirs, and when it goes down, they do, they decrease it, but it's very reactive, unlike.
But that's many times. Reactive, too. I suppose, and other.
Yeah, but this, this reflects that the interest rate went down.
Yeah, that's great. Let's see if I hear things.
So you all have the resolution in your packet, and the "whereas" is just talks about New York General Municipal Law empowers municipal corporations to enter into a man-cancel and terminate agreements or performance on themselves of their respective functions, powers, and duties on a cooperative or contract basis. Village Red Hook wishes to invest portions of its available investment funds in cooperation with other corporations and/or districts pursuant to the New York Class Municipal Cooperative Cooperation Agreement amended and restated as of August 2, 2023. Whereas Village Red Hook wishes to assure the safety and liquidity needs of their funds. Now therefore, he has resolved, Mayor Karen Smythe, that Village Red Hook is hereby authorized to register the Village Red Hook in the New York Class program under the terms of the New York Class Municipal Agreement amended and restated as of August 1, 2023. He had further resolved Mayor Karen Smythe, Treasurer, Mary Beth Heath Phillips, and Controller Michelle Zaborski be the authorized signers. I would just add, a further resolved prior to investing any funds, the board will review and adopt a, a New York Class investment policy.
Do you want to say initial, initial investment? Just, it doesn't infer that you have to do that before every fund, right? I mean, before every?
My, I guess what I, and, I can, we could, I know, it's the spirit of it.
If it's prior to initial investment? If it's clear, I just was, that's the one in my.
Well, I can say prior to initial investment. I'll maybe also, so prior to initial investment, comma, the board will review and adopt a New York Class investment policy.
If we already have an investment policy, I'm assuming, and I apologize for not knowing the entire code perfectly, but is this in keeping with that policy? Or, like, I'm more accustomed to an investment policy that sort of lays out ground rules for choice, choices, and then?
So the issue, because the investment policy is in the code.
Uh, we have to do it.
We would either have to amend the code, or, and so I think that's part of the next process, is to confirm that the investment policy in the code allows us, without any changes to it, to, to do this.
Okay.
And I honestly think to look at it before tonight.
If we motion second and vote for it, then it's not, like, what just happened? It just?
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to.
Oh, we're not getting anything anyway?
So then the, then we will have to bring forth a policy that.
Okay. Make it work the code.
That makes sense.
Which is why the additional, the resolved, gives us that flexibility to do that. This gives, gives me the authority to sign up, but it doesn't give us the authority to put it on hand, so it's, because it'll take a minute to, to, you know, well, it'll take that long, but if I can get it all pulled together and organized by our workshop, we'll do, we'll do them. It's not going to be the great alignment.
And I classed a little remark.
You sure about? Great. Any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve the resolution as amended. That was Fran. Second? I'll second.
Uh, yeah.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
I think it's great if we have.
Number twenty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one, thank you. The, the next item on the agenda is QuickBooks Online, and this really is just an update for you all. Our financials are done in QuickBooks, and we use QuickBooks Desktop. QuickBooks is very much pushing QuickBooks Online. Desktop means you have to have it on your physical computer. And so we are going to be moving, Mary Beth is ready to go, which is what I've been waiting for. We are going to be moving to QuickBooks Online. And the, the cost, it is, it is more out-of-pocket cost. The most recent annual subscription for our, in our QuickBooks was $918 a year. With QuickBooks Online, we'll be purchasing it through our controller. And so because we have three companies effectively, it'll be a combined total of $149.30 a month, which is effectively $1,800 a year, which is about $870 more than what we're paying now. Every time there's an update, CMI Tech has to get involved. Every time there's an issue with signing in, CMI Tech has to get involved. So at $125 an hour, that's seven hours of their time, which I, and that doesn't include an estimate of how much extra time Michelle, our Controller, ends up spending because she can't get on, or there's an issue. So for all those reasons, it will, it will work out, it will work out in the wash, and will hopefully, Mary Beth assures me it will make her more, more efficient. So I just wanted to let you know that we are moving. It will fall in the category of the Treasurer's expenses, in which we have, we have a budget of $2,000, so we have, we have money to cover that. We will also get a refund from the renewal that we just did. We did it in March, so we will get a pro-rate portion of, of the refund back. So it will not be the full $1,800 for the first year for us. And the first two years are fixed at this rate. You know, and this will happen after that, but I think this will be an important change. So I just wanted to let you all know that. Now we get into committees. So the first one we have on the docket is the Red Hook Village Green Committee. And so I'll just read it. Fran and I have worked on this together. There's a resolution to authorize Red Hook Village Green Committee. Whereas Chapter 179 in the Village Code, which is called Community Forestry Program, establishes the Village Green Committee under 179-4 Administration for the Community Forestry Program. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees would like to clarify the structure and powers and duties of the Village Green Committee, now therefore be it resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Green Committee as follows. Membership, Chapter 179-4 of the Village Code, the Village Green Committee will consist of three officers appointed in December, all to be residents of the village. That's in the code, being appointed in December, which is why that's there. Additional members may be appointed by the mayor or approved by the village board. There is no maximum number of members, however, a majority of the members shall be residents of the village. A board member appointed by the mayor will serve as liaison to the board, responsible for reporting on the actions of the committee. Officers and members will serve one-year terms, not subject to term limits. Meetings Guidelines, the committee shall follow the open meetings law. Agendas and minutes of all meetings shall be kept and filed with the village clerk. A meeting schedule shall be established by the chair, and all meetings shall be posted one week in advance on the village website and open to the public. Powers and Duties, I think we mentioned the chair in the membership, but, that's okay. The committee is charged with developing and administering the details of the Community Forestry Program as laid out in Chapter 179 of the Village Code in collaboration with the DPW Foreman. And it's in collaboration with the DPW Foreman, because part of the administration is related to both planting trees and cutting down trees that need to be cut down or trimmed. And our DPW Foreman is intimately involved in that process. As per Chapter 179-2, the village will set aside a budget of at least $2 per capita based on village population for the implementation of the Community Forestry Program. The committee will advise the board on any recommended adjustments to the Community Forestry Program. The committee will organize and host a annual Arbor Day observance and proclamation. The committee will keep and update the tree inventory of the village. Committee will adhere to the Tree City USA Guidelines to ensure continued acceptance of the Tree City USA. Any bench donations will be coordinated through the committee. Additional beautification, planting, education projects can be recommended to the board.
Can that cover? Yes, there was one thing I, on meeting guidelines, and we didn't talk about this, but in meeting with some of the committees pursuant to be appointed committee members, we had talked about virtual meetings just happen to be more convenient for people, but I know we have to follow open meetings law. Is there a way I can publish a link to a Zoom or a Google Meet with Jen and have that be on the site so that people are aware that?
So that's a good question, because I think open meetings law, you, it doesn't, it doesn't really allow for that.
For virtual?
I'm one, well, because you're not.
You're supposed to have a quorum in one public site.
I'm wondering if that matters for a committee?
I don't know.
Then it wouldn't be.
Like the way that we have.
It wouldn't, that's what I'm thinking.
But the actual committee members, they have to be in.
Yeah.
They're limited, which is the availability.
Ah, I see what you mean. Okay, it is, because I have, yeah, okay.
And then even, there's a whole, we did a whole policy, what was it, two years ago, that we can share with you?
Okay.
Yeah, because I, because I think part of the open meetings law is you have to have a cor, but you have to have a quorum on the site. But that's for elected.
Yeah.
So maybe, I'm just thinking, maybe we should, instead of referencing open meetings law, just say it needs to be open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
What you already do in the third bullet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just cross out the open meetings law.
Thank you so much.
And then, then it just, so if you did do meetings over Zoom, you would make sure they're on the calendar and published schedules, so that it could be, same way you do agendas.
Are we good with, or shall we just say the committee, committee meetings will be open to the public? Because it just says that the schedule is going to be on the website and open to the public.
Well, we think agendas, right? The agendas are.
I'm just looking, the third bullet point says, the meeting schedule shall be established by the chair, and all meetings shall be posted one week in, oh, okay, in advance on the village website and open to the public. All meetings, open to the public.
Why don't you pull that out?
Yeah, exactly.
And for that, the first quote, all meetings, all meetings shall be open to the public. And then?
All meetings shall be open to the public and just, yeah.
Exactly, number one. I'm following.
Yeah, and also we can get, because we don't have a chair, so we can, we can just have, kind of just the all meetings.
A meeting schedule should be established, and then, so just eliminate the chair.
Sure.
So I'll take out the words by the chair.
Okay.
And in that third bullet, I'm also deleting "and open to the public" because we put that in the first bullet.
Do we want anything specific about putting the Zoom link in the agenda? I, I, not that, just so that someone else were to take it on, they would know what the procedure is?
So we can do a fourth, we can do a fourth bullet that says, attendance via Zoom is acceptable, and the Zoom link. and the Zoom link shall be available on the agenda.
And it how?
If you say it's acceptable, it implies that there would be an option, that's an alternative. Right? So if all the meetings are going to all be virtual?
Mm-hmm.
No, I think obviously it's an option.
Okay. It's not the same.
And if it, if it's helpful, I can give Jen, like, because there are some, uh, currently, I, I think it's the second Sunday of the first month in the quarter, blah, blah, blah. Um, and those are in person or have been so far.
Yes.
But, but this is, this is sort of, um, pending, like, this is, these are meetings that a lot of the people who I've identified, just virtual works better for, and, and we could get a lot more stuff done. Um, so.
How?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 I just meant that not all meetings will be in person, so.
And I, I want to.
But there's always a link.
I want to make sure, well, that's the question, do, do we want to set it up that if, that there might not be a Zoom option? Say, if you're going to have a meeting in person, you might not want to set up the Zoom link, so it could be if, um, if a Zoom link is available, it will be on the, it will be on the agenda.
If you're going to be giving people one week in advance, and they're sometimes, they're not going to know until one week in advance whether or not it's in person or Zoom?
Yeah, so one question. I'm sorry, did I cut you off any?
Oh, no.
So if we do a, um, are you talking about, like, you have quarterly meetings, right? That's the, the schedule, and those would be in person. But you're kind of talking about almost like project meetings that you do in between? Sort of like being able to use Zoom to get together to do a project? Is that considered the full committee making decisions, or is that like task-based stuff that you're doing in between? I don't know, I, I was just, yeah.
I would. I think it just came up some other way.
Two dollars, you know, minimum for residents, that's tax dollars. So if it's a, I think, if it's a meeting at which a decision about spending said money will happen, it has to be a public meeting.
Yeah, but if it's something that you're doing something, if you're following up and following through with something that was decided at a meeting, and it's like you're just, it's like a work group?
But then we have to really define, like, what.
I know, I just was wondering, because sometimes it is helpful to be able to Zoom with someone when you're working on a small part of the product. Already, the funds have already been declared, and it's already, the scope is already decided, and you're just doing that, like, you know.
But that's often a, a, a subgroup of the whole committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So really, a full committee meeting.
Yes.
Should be open to the public.
Yes.
If it's a couple of folks on the, I mean, again, you've got.
The quorum rules apply, yeah, you've got five people on the committee right now.
Yeah.
So if it's, you know, if it's two people, it, it wouldn't qualify as a.
But if it's three, maybe.
But if it's three, it would, so, yeah, I guess quorum rules would apply.
Okay.
So, okay, so going back into the weeds, quorum rules apply to, to the, whether or not it's being made to pu, public. And then how far in advance do you think a Zoom link has to be posted so that people feel like it's?
I'm not worried about that scenario so much as I am that someone wouldn't know if a meeting were going to be only in person, or there wouldn't be a Zoom link one week in advance. Like, I think that.
You mean a hybrid?
No, not, because she said some meetings would not be, would, would all be in person. And so then if there were going to be a Zoom link, so I'm saying if there were any meetings where there weren't going to be a Zoom link that was of the full committee, I don't think a week is enough, because people might have to get childcare or leave work early.
So to address the first part, I'm going to suggest that the first bullet becomes, all meetings shall be open to the public when a quorum is present.
Uh-huh.
Yes. Um.
Great, thank you.
And then the, um, the fourth bullet will be, um.
Well, maybe it can always have a Zoom link, and then someone can always, always zoom in. Yes, uh, I mean, you open to that, Fran?
Absolutely. The only thing is, does it have to be Zoom?
No, I would, I would think you should generalize it.
Generalize.
Virtual.
Video conferencing.
Yeah, just in case the Zoom goes away.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll just put a virtual option.
Thank you so much.
For attendance. Will be available.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And do we say anything about the link being in the agenda? Or is that, the agenda's not going to be shared with the clerk ahead of time? It gets technical, sorry, or?
No, no, that's okay.
A virtual option for attendance will be available, um.
How people find that out, if it would just be submitted to the clerk, like, a week, but, however?
I'm envisioning just setting up a recurring. Neither.
Like the board.
Like, yeah, like the board meetings, it's the same link, it's the same.
Does that work for you?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
The only time that becomes an issue is if someone chooses to, um, bomb your meeting, and then you have to make a new link.
Have you had that?
Um, not, not, that's not in the village.
Hmm, hmm.
In another context.
If I had a.
Yeah.
In a very.
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact. Um, a virtual option for attendance will be available. Um, will be made available in advance.
Would that, is it acceptable?
No.
No.
Maybe it should be made available.
So what if you just amend bullet point three? A meeting schedule shall be established, and all meetings shall be posted one week in advance, including a virtual option? Or, you know, including a, the, uh, including a way to attend virtually? And then you don't need to make it the fourth bullet. I'm going to square the fourth bullet though.
Okay. Um, just because a virtual option for attendance will be available.
So, um, I know I'm getting.
But then you lose the timer.
So if, if. Will be made available with the meeting schedule.
There you go.
Okay.
With the meeting schedule.
Okay, shall I read that back?
Can I just say one thing?
You may.
Does the planting day become an issue?
Why?
Because it's not.
Virtual?
Yeah, because you have the whole quorum there altogether, and you're outside.
Is it a meeting?
It is.
Uh, so we're going to say except for planting days.
Yeah, or site visits and, and planting, like, because the thing is, I assume that there's a certain amount of visits outside and looking at things and looking at sites together and doing stuff like that, so. Should we say, um, when, when, not permissible, but when, um.
Possible.
When possible? It should be, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the other, the other would be.
Maybe available?
The other would be except for planting days and site visits.
Or with the exception of outdoors, when the quorum is out.
I can just say may be available, but will be available.
There you go.
Do people mind it being may instead of will?
I mean.
It doesn't fully address.
Yeah.
Yeah, go, I'm wondering, that's, that's, yeah, so you.
I think that when you do that, then it opens the possibility for a quorum meeting where there is no Zoom. That's not outdoors.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's say a virtual option for attendance will be made available with the meeting schedule except for, um, planting days and site visits, or just outdoor meetings.
If we can say outdoor meetings, that would be good.
Yeah.
For outdoors. Okay?
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay. So I'm just going to read that all again, so we're all on the same page. So the meeting guidelines are, first bullet, all meetings shall be open to the public when a quorum is present. Should I say a quorum of the members?
Hmm, yeah.
Of course, there are officers and members.
Yes.
I'm going to leave it.
You did?
Uh, agendas and minutes of all meetings shall be kept and filed with the village clerk. A meeting schedule shall be established, and all meetings shall be posted one week in advance on the village website. A virtual option for attendance will be made available with the meeting schedule except for outdoor meetings. Okay.
Are you, okay, this, just working from my mechanic, uh, this, uh, meeting schedule posted one week in advance. If you set up the schedule at the beginning of the year, is that, that's cool?
Yeah.
Right, so.
A meeting can happen.
Yeah, uh, shall be posted.
Well, I mean, I think.
At least one week.
Okay, we can just post that at least.
And then if we do it once, we do it, right, and we don't have to do it ever again.
I was going to say, I think, having, having the, the year and then having the possibility of something happening actually. Perfect, make that.
That's great.
Okay.
I have, uh, one question before we turn the page on the membership.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when it says, I know it's straight from the code, it says will consist of three officers appointed in December. We don't clarify who's appointed, are they appointed by the committee itself, or they appoint?
No, they're, 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 um, appointed by the mayor, approved by the board. If you want to add that to that.
Well, just because it says additional mayors may be appointed by the mayor, I, I think it should be, yeah.
So we'll add after, shall, um, that will consist of three officers appointed by the mayor.
I mean, you could also just say all members.
Yeah, that's a chance.
Okay. Instead of additional, all members?
The officers. Well, because officer, and, um, well, do we want to say that officers are members?
Yeah, officers, you have to be a member to be an officer, no?
Interesting, right?
You do.
Okay, so we'll change additional members to all members.
And then just instead of may.
And then instead of may, all, uh, will. Yeah, it kind of changes the point of the second one, but.
Sorry, I, that's a.
No, but that's okay, I, it's, it's important to be clear now. Um, all members will be appointed by the mayor, approved by the village board. There's no maximum, however. Oh, yeah, that works, that still, that works. Okay.
Okay. So did we lose officers?
No.
Okay.
No, so the, the bullets stay the same, the second bullet, instead of additional, is going to be all?
Yes.
And instead of may, will be will.
Wonderful, thank you.
Powers and duties. Everybody good with those?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, no.
Well, this should be the hard part. Okay. Once you got there, uh, do I have a motion to accept the?
I have one more thing.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
So we, in the Climate Smart Task Force, we have this line where we say that, um, they are allowed to implement actions approved by the village board. We have that they can be recommended to the board, but we don't have that they can implement them.
Uh, recommend to the board. And implement it upon approval?
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Her wishes.
All right, now I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two. How moved? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm excited. I'm great.
This is going to be our first official. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Awesome, well done. Okay, um, the next one is the events committee. Um, and I'm just going to read it. Recom, recognizing that this is a significant shift in the role of the events committee, um, whereas the village red hook, um, seeks to facilitate and encourage public events in the village, whereas the village owns public spaces suitable for events consistent with the public interest, whereas the village needs a method to promote the creation of such events that is equitable and fair, now therefore be a result, the village board of trustees hereby creates the events committee as follows. Membership, events committee members will be appointed by the mayor and approved by the board. Events committee members must be the village residents. A board member appointed by the mayor will serve as liaison to the board, responsible for reporting on the actions of the committee. Events committee members will serve, see, with less than, um, I, two years seem to be a good timeframe. There shall be a minimum of three members, uh-oh.
Yeah, we currently only have two members, um, so.
Right, so, well, that is an issue. Well, we also don't have, we don't have our, um, events permit law.
We do not, yeah.
So, um, meeting guidelines, the committee shall follow open meetings law, so we're going to, we're going to take that out. And all meetings shall be open to the public?
No.
When a quorum is present.
Well, here's our problem.
So should we just take that out altogether?
Well, hold on, let me talk it through, because it's not like we're trying to hide anything, but the, there are going to be meetings that will be. At the current point, it would be me and you, right, at the meetings with people who are applying for events. Those, even though that would be the full committee at present, those shouldn't be open to the public because it is our organization that wants to put on events, meaning to go through the permitting process once we have the permit processes, uh, in law. So, um, I think it could be, hmm. I mean, there is not going to be cause for this committee to meet monthly, um, given its powers and duties. Um, so.
It's going to be, it's going to be hard to schedule a meeting. The only reason for the committee to have a meeting, like, a regularly scheduled meeting that's not reviewing an event permit is going to be to recommend.
Changes, right, so I was about to suggest that there be a quarterly meeting open to the public, um, so that.
So we can, so.
Monthly is crazy.
Well, and we don't say monthly in here anyway, but.
No, I know.
We could say that, um.
Those would be a different schedule.
We could identify the meetings as, um, event permit reviews are not subject of, uh, are, would not be open to the public. Looks like we should do that.
Yes, or applicants. I think we should do.
Yeah, applicant meetings.
Sure.
Just because you might be reviewing them.
But we might also end up needing to meet with someone after they've got their permit, like, they're no longer applicants, but they've got questions.
So permit review committees, permit review meetings.
Yeah.
They're not open to the public?
Yes, that would be correct. I mean, this could be a third bullet, actually, and it could be permit review meetings are not open to the public, however, their outcomes will be presented by the liaison, because that's the whole.
Right, I could say their, well, their outcome then has to come to the board anyway.
Right, exactly. But we should put it in there.
Will come to the board, presented to the board.
Presented.
And then, I mean, minutes of all meetings, um, shall be kept and filed with the clerk, the meeting schedule.
So that's. I mean, we can establish, we can.
We can establish the meeting schedule, so it could be quarterly.
So those, so we could say, you know, a meeting schedule of, of meetings, or whatever, a schedule of meetings open to the public shall be established with the chair. Does that make sense?
With? Established by the chair.
Oh, yes.
A schedule of.
Meeting.
Or it could be regular or non-permit review meetings.
Sure.
Um, of non-permit review meetings shall be established by the chair, and all meetings where possible should be posted one week in advance on the village website. We good with that?
At least.
Yeah. One week in advance, okay.
And then, so minutes of all public meetings, right? Sure.
Yeah.
Somebody could decide at one of these meetings to withdraw their application, and, or, you know, there's nothing to.
To report, yeah.
Okay?
So I was going to say, and this is like totally insane, but are there different font sizes used in this?
Of course, of course.
This is where you're going.
Because this one has different font sizes, and this one, I think, has different fonts.
Yes.
I mean, just have.
It'll, they'll all be corrected in the end.
My apologies.
My apologies. I'm going to go through afterwards and.
I'm just saying, you know.
Re-beautify them all.
Apologize. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Gary, you might be so long. Yeah, I just realized that, you know.
Driving you crazy, yeah.
The only other thing before we go to powers and duties would be, given that we have two of us, do we want to have a minimum of two members for now, so that we can have a committee, or do we?
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense just for now, um.
You guys okay with two members?
I'm perfectly happy with more members, I just don't think that this has, this has become a. I mean, I'm perfectly happy with more members. I just don't think that this has, this has become a, this is a.
A very different committee.
It's, it's an exceedingly wonky purpose now. You have to, like, be really into public event law and ADA law and, um, if someone out there is into it, awesome.
But, and that's why having it be a minimum, we can always add more. And then that allows us to. Okay, so powers and duties, the village events committee is charged with advising the village board of trustees on the village events permit application and process. So the events committee, um, will ensure that the agreed upon process is followed. Be it further advice resolved that after the initial review of each permit application, an events committee member shall meet with the mayor and the applicant for the purpose of advising the mayor. Now, is that what?
Yeah.
Okay, so the committee members are serving two years, will have a minimum of two members. We've changed it to separate, change, distinguish between permit review meetings and non-permit review meetings. Um, otherwise, as, as is. You guys good with that?
That's great.
Okay, motion to set twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Go move.
Thank you, Fran. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, on to the next one. Um, this one, we've tackled back and forth just a little bit already, so hopefully we're close. Um, this is the resolution to create a climate smart communities task force. And I'll just, I'll just read it. Uh, the village of Red Hook, uh, formally adopted a climate smart communities pledge and resolution on February eleventh, twenty nineteen, recognizing the threat of climate change to our village operations, citizens on the planet, and outlining initial steps that should be taken to mitigate this threat, increase energy efficiency and build resilience and sustainability in our village. Therefore, be it resolved, the village board, the village of Red Hook hereby creates a task force, which shall be known as the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, here and after called CFC Task Force. And be it further resolved, that the village board of trustees hereby establishes the Climate Smart Communities Task Force as follows. I'm not following all of my.
Yeah, this.
I'm sorry.
Totally agree with that.
Establishes the CFC Task Force.
You don't actually mean here and after. Are you just?
Yes, this is, yes, yeah, also local area. Listed from others. Um, so membership, CFC Task Force members will be appointed by the mayor and approved by the village board. The CFC Task Force will contain a minimum of four and a maximum of seven members and will include the following. I'm not, I don't, I was thinking about that today. I don't know if we need a maximum. I don't know if there's a benefit to having a maximum.
If you wanted to keep.
Yeah.
Uh, like, if you wanted to put in a village resident requirement?
Uh, well, that comes next. So, we'll come back to the maximum. So a village board member appointed by the mayor will serve as liaison to the board and be responsible for, for reporting the actions of the task force.
The only, I'm gonna just argue for that, the only reason of having a maximum is when it becomes an issue of getting a quorum present. When you get so big that it's hard to get.
Right, I guess that then the question is, what is the, what is the, when do you need it, like, when are you voting on? Um, but yeah, no, that's, that's true.
No, no, I'm just saying that that would be the, if, if they are not actually, I mean, we are doing, anything that has funds comes to us.
Right.
It's not the same.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, that's sort of where I was thinking.
Okay, great.
But anyway, we'll come back to that. So a minimum of three, excluding the village trustee, shall be residents of the village of Red Hook. Additional members who are not village residents may be appointed based on their expertise or experience with environmental and sustainable work. Uh, a chair will be appointed by the mayor from among these members and approved by the board. Um, bullet two, the purpose of that, it goes with the maximum of seven, it means that a majority will be village residents. Um, and then the term of office, the task force members shall be two years, except when members are first appointed. Three members shall be, shall serve for one year and four shall serve for a full two years, uh, the idea being that they'll be.
Three is not a majority of seven, though.
Correct, but it's, the, when first appointed, three members.
Oh, oh, right, 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 I forgot about the staggering.
Four, yes, that, that's just staggering it, so everybody does, isn't up at the same time. When a member's term ends, he or she may remain on the CFC Task Force until such time as a replacement is appointed and may be reappointed for another two-year term of active discretion of, uh, those boards.
Uh, this should be you.
Yeah.
Discretion with the mayor. Okay, can I make that? And if vacancies shall be filled in the same manner as the original appointment, except if a vacancy occurring other than by expiration of term of office shall be filled only for the remainder of the unexpired term.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Why are we going to this extreme to define membership for this committee, but not the others? In terms of like vacancies and all that?
The reality is that the original, um, template that was used was from a much more formal, a much, much larger municipality, and it was, it was a much more formal, and we've actually simplified it a lot. We, we don't need, I mean, the, the last bullet is the way it's gonna be. We don't need to articulate it, so we can certainly.
Just wanna articulate things for the other places.
Happy to do that.
And, I mean, for all our, for previous two committees, everyone is expiring on the same schedule. So why is it different for climate smart?
Well, you only have two members.
I know, but I'm thinking of, of those three.
Uh, but those are one years' ones. So those three.
One. Oh, okay, I mean, I don't.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it's totally fine, it just.
It's just, uh, you know, sort of going forward.
Mm-hmm.
It'll stagger it out, which is probably good practice, I think. So given that, I mean, I'm happy to leave the maximum of seven for now, we can adjust it later if we're finding, I don't.
I don't mind either way. I know that when we would, the, oh, the EDC, which I'm sorry to bring it up, but they would often meet and not have quorum, because there was a certain amount of members, there's a nine-member board, that just were not active participants, because they have business owners and they were, you know. So often we'd have meetings where there was just no official discussion happening, and I did think that kind of slowed down the, um, the efficacy of the conversations and, you know, actions. But that's not to say.
Well, to that point, we would have, we can have a maximum of seven members, which doesn't mean that other people can't just.
Yes, yes, totally.
Contribute to any of these.
Mm-hmm, great.
All right, no, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it up, because I was looking at it, going, oh, you are. See, that's important. Okay, so if we're good with membership. Meeting guidelines, chair shall provide, preside over all official meetings.
I don't need that.
Good one. Uh, the task force shall follow open meetings law. Do we want to do the same? Let me, shall be open to public when a quorum is present. Be open to the public. When quorums come. Okay. Gender's minutes of all meetings shall be kept and followed with the village clerk. Meeting schedule shall be established. Now, do we want to add the same opportunity for, um, virtual, virtualness? Actually, I think that folks have asked for it, as a matter of fact, so let's add the.
Same with everything. For screens.
Yeah, a virtual option for attendance will be made available with the meeting schedule. Well, and, and it's an opportunity to encourage participation, which is good. Um, is there any reason why the Climate Smart Task Force will be meeting in the field?
Might, they might, they might.
So why don't we say the same thing, unless it's outside?
Great.
Is it old when you say that?
After a meeting. Or in a place that Wi-Fi's, no. We can do a half a block.
There you go. Come to the village hall. Uh, okay, powers and duties, um, use the New York State EDC Climate Smart Communities pledge elements to prioritize actions with the goal of achieving bronze certification as quickly and efficiently as possible, followed by increasing levels of climate smart community certification. Recommend the prioritized actions to the village board for approval. Implement actions approved by the village board. Submit an annual report to the village board outlining its activities over the past calendar year and goals for the year ahead.
Should we be doing that for?
Everyone, probably. I mean, the events committee, not really.
No, I know.
Um, village green, it could. But this, I mean, I think for these guys, it's, it's particularly relevant because of the.
Great structure. The events committee would be nice to see all the things, you know, all the events in a calendar of a year, kind of, no?
That can be done at the last, um, board meeting, so some of all that application or all the permits going through the year.
Yeah. I have one question, uh, at this one.
Oh, yeah, um.
Okay.
But we don't have, I mean, we don't have to add that to the other, because they're probably accrued.
You're talking about the annual report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity to share what, what has gone on. I don't know that, I mean, I, this.
I do it in my monthlies anyway.
Yeah, I think for the Climate Smart Task Force, because we have the all of bronze certification and the next level.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the annual report becomes, um, that much more important. Okay, um, I'll take a motion to approve this resolution as amended.
Go move.
Thank you, Mel Corca. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, we have three committees.
Number twenty-four, that one.
Okay, so you have, I handed you, um, another resolution, which would be twenty-five. And this one, um, appoints today members. So this has the board approves the mayor's appointment as listed below. Village Green Committee, all terms ending, oh, actually, that would be long. Uh, so it's gonna end, what, twelve thirty-one? Thirty-one twenty-five, if that change. Uh, liaison.
Why, why are we ending in a?
Because, because by code, um, the village green committee, they're appointed.
In calendar year?
Yeah, I know, sorry. We, we just need to change the code and then we.
Thank you.
Then we can make that change. Uh, liaison trustee, Fran.
Still happy on spelling.
Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, there are forty, forty lashes of the web table. I am sorry. Ay, ay, ay.
I love how it's correcting, you don't buy.
Forget eventually.
We can't go away.
Um, all right, officers Tara Hill, Hillbrand, Kevin Joseph McGinnis, and Joy Glass, and member David Pearson.
I have one more member, like, I was literally, literally driving over, and his name is Jimmy Cashin. Um, he will also.
C-A-S-H-I-N-E-N, okay, that one too.
That's good.
Okay, so we'll add that under David Pearson, David Cashin.
Jim Cashin.
Jim Cashin. But I wrote down. I want to hear that, yeah. Um, that's terrific. And then the events committee, these terms will end four, five, twenty-seven, because they're two-years' terms. That's, that's what I assumed, and so that's, um, Karen Smith.
I would be double E, absolutely.
Would you like to be the liaison? Okay, and, um. Uh, liaison. Okay, so I mean, liaisons of that committee. Okay, that's, uh, those are the ones that we had. I'm, I'm actually meeting with the Climate Smart Communities Task Force later this week, and so we will review the resolution and, and see about membership, et cetera. Um, so I'll be able to come back with you, to, with, to, to you within the next meeting. Okay, uh, I'll take a motion to accept this, uh, resolution twenty-five as amended. Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Look at that.
Twenty-five, great.
All right, um, and then just making a note that the next workshop meeting is Monday, June twenty-third. They're shifting to Monday. Um, and then the next board meeting is July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And now, on to, uh, committee reports and department reports. Um, so we start with our treasurer, Mary Dusky.
You don't need to use that. Oh, actually, you could, yeah, do use that. Keep talking.
Mel Corca, you want to switch, just turn your, yeah.
As May thirty-first, the village's financial position is as follows. As for funds from the bank, in the general fund, we have eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-five and forty-four cents. And the water fund, two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven and three dollars and two cents. And the sewer fund, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. In the payroll clearing account, we have fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents. And Harts Scrabble account, we have five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. In the village green account, six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. The health insurance deductible account holds eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. As for our reserve checking balance, this fire department holds ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. The bridge department, eighteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-seven cents. The USDA water reserve account holds one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents. A highway reserve, six hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. Snow reserve, three thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Our shower reserve account holds eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The water reserve is seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. The court reserve is three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the office reserve is one thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. As for our monthly expenses, in May, in the general fund, we spent one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Water fund had expenses of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-one and seventy cents. The payroll clearing account had expenses of one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-one cents. And the sewer fund had fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and thirty-one cents. Back to the ladies for dinner.
All in agreement?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Oh, I forget, we don't need to approve those, do we? We do. I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Go move.
Thank you, Mel Corca. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, okay, my reports. The first thing that I want to report on, one of the things, um, our special meeting was about insurance, um, that we approved, this was the, um, general liability auto, et cetera. Um, and I just received a press release saying that, um, um, NYMA, which is New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal, which is who we have our insurance with, um, affirmed that, uh, AM, and I forget what AM stands for, but it's a rating agency, uh, affirmed NYMA's financial strength rating at, of A minus, which is excellent. And so I thought you all would like to know that our insurance company has an excellence rating. Police report, I have both the April and the May police reports. So for April, there were three hundred and twenty incidents, hundred and seventy-eight in the village of Red Hook, a hundred and twenty-four in the town of Red Hook, and eighteen in the village of Tibbly. There were a hundred and twelve water tower security checks. There were eight uniform traffic tickets. Of those, forty-five were in the village of Red Hook, thirty-two in the town of Red Hook, and three in the village of Tibbly. Parking tickets, there were nine in the village of Red Hook and none in the other two municipalities. And arrests, there were three in the village of Red Hook and five in the town of Red Hook and none in the village of Tibbly. And then for May, we had three hundred and forty-eight incidents, a hundred and eighty-eight in the village of Red Hook, a hundred and forty-six in the town of Red Hook, and fourteen in the village of Tibbly. There were a hundred and seven water tower security checks, a hundred and four uniform traffic tickets. Of those, sixty-four were in the village of Red Hook. Thirty-eight were in the town of Red Hook and two were in the village of Tibbly. Parking tickets, there were ten in the village of Red Hook, none in the town of Red Hook, and one in the village of Tibbly. And there were seven arrests, four in the village of Red Hook, three in the town of Red Hook. That's it for, um, police reports. I do have also fire accompanying reports, uh, incident reports for both April and May. I gave you my summary chart. So for April in the village, there were thirty-three total, um, incidents. Of those twenty-two fell under the EMS category, six fell under the category of alarms. On the sheet that you have, if you look at the back, it has, uh, sort of a summary, like, seven hundred, there are alarms, smoke alarms, um, it'd be carbon monoxide alarm, false alarm, unintentional. Um, these are the grouping of the list of all the items that fall under those. Um, uh, so where are we, April? So there were eleven, um, alarms. There were no, um, fires, um, that's how you describe that. Fires are building fires, cooking fires, that sort of thing. Um, and then there was, there were, there was one in the assist invalid service, call person in distress, distress category. Um, and the village has thirty-three percent of the total incidents. The remaining incidents, there were sixty-eight, and there were outside of the village. Thirty-four were EMS calls, twenty-one were alarms, two fires, two hazards, um, three assist invalid, and four, uh, good intent calls. And then in the month of May, there were thirty incidents in the Village of Red Hook. Twenty-two of those were EMS calls, um, six were alarm calls, and two were the assist invalid, et cetera, type of calls. Um, and then in the town, there were sixty-five incidents. Forty-four of those were EMS calls, seventy-seven, uh, sorry, fourteen were alarms. One was a hazard, three were, um, assist invalid calls, and then three were good intent, uh, smoke scare calls. So that is the reports for the fire company. You may?
Um, when they are reporting the number of EMS, are those the number of EMS calls that Red Hook Fire responded to, or the number that they received, and some of which they may have been unable to and then moved on to?
So I don't have, I don't have that detail. What I have is a list, what I have is an incident list by incident number.
Okay.
Um, that is a, a, a question that I've been qualified with them. Um, yeah, is, is, are, are these alarms that go off, or are these, my guess is that they are alarms that go off.
The EMS call is what I'm asking.
I just, I believe we should ask, I, you're reasonable, ask that question for all of them.
Oh, yeah. I'm asking about EMS, just because they can't.
I'm not making a big deal of that. Do you know, do you know if the, the alarm calls are set by the nine-one-one thing that comes in, or this is a classification done by Red Hook themselves, do you know?
My guess, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I would, I would guess that it's a standard code that's set by, by, um, the dispatch.
By dispatch, yeah, okay. So usually, these are people that are, I guess, they get called both ways, right? Through nine-one-one and through, when people call the.
It should all, it should all go through nine-one-one.
Okay.
It all, it all should go through dispatch. I don't know if anyone's supposed to call the fire company directly. They're not set up to answer those calls, I don't think? I don't know that I'm wrong, the number, but it should say, this is an emergency call, nine-one-one. It's all supposed, because, because there's, it, it goes to Red Hook.
Yeah.
But it also alerts everyone around, and generally, more than one show up, more than one company show up. Like if it's any EMS call.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, um, N D P is dispatched also.
Yeah.
Um, they don't always do the transport, but they're also dispatched.
Okay.
There's a protocol.
Yes, that's right.
Um, of who gets dispatched first, how long until the second dispatch, but everyone can hear the initial dispatch.
Yeah.
But interesting questions, because perhaps I can ask someone from the fire company to comment on your question, you know, to share a little bit more, so we can understand what their processes.
The reason why I assume that group called fire thing is because I thought that there was, I mean, I know the whole thing, it's an emergency, it was hooked down, nine-one-one. But the, the cost of an ambulance can be quite expensive, that's one of the private companies, so I just didn't know where it was at. Yeah, okay, interesting.
Um, right, so your, what your question was, EMS calls reported, are they, is it a list of answer calls or alarms?
It's our, yeah, it's Red Hook.
And your question was?
Who sets the codes, but my question is, and I was pressing, it was just a.
No, that's good. Great, no, that's good stuff. Okay, um, I'm just, our company comes to sewer departments. Um, so we had a lot of, a lot of activity in the month of May. Um, at both plants, the U V light systems were repaired or replaced on Tuesday, May thirteenth. So the U Vs were back in U V, would be ultraviolet light, um, were back in full operation on May fourteenth. We had been adding chlorine tablets to, uh, the U Vs are there to disinfect, and the chlorine tablets were serving that purpose while the U V lights were not working. And so with the U Vs back online, the chlorine tablets have been discontinued. That was discontinued as of May fourteenth. At the old plant, the valves were replaced on May sixteenth and seventeenth. Uh, the sand filter was repaired, and old sand was replaced with fresh sand. The old plant was brought back online as of May nineteenth. It takes a while to fill up the tanks, so the way the system works is when, when the, um, influence comes into the, it, it doesn't, uh, just immediately get processed and sent back out, it actually goes into the tank. Um, and so the tank has to fill back up, so that when stuff comes in, it then goes out. So it took about, it took about a week, um, for, for outflow renew. Um, first test, test samples, um, since being back online, we're taking five twenty-eight. Preliminary results from the old plant for ammonia and fecal coliform are in compliance. The fecal coliform is what the U V lights, um, disinfect, uh, remove. So that was, that was the good news. Uh, the microbiological bugs are growing, um, the target is two thousand. Um, on five twenty-five, they were two hundred, um, they were seven hundred on five thirty. Uh, somewhere, I think on five, um, six, five, they were seven eighty. So they are slowly growing, as normal. Uh, the operations of the new plant has, have improved significantly. However, we are not yet in full compliance with our last system. Um, uh, Pure Stream, the manufacturer of the new wastewater treatment plant, visited, visited the plant, uh, the week of May nineteenth to review the plant's operations with Delaware Engineering and our team. The blowers, which blow in the air, which is an important part of the process, need to be optimized. They're working, but they, they, they can be optimized. We also currently have temporary pumps in the equalization tank, and those will be replaced in May coming. Um, there are what's called weirs, so the plant has two sides, um, and the weirs, um, kind of regulate how much goes in one side or the other, and one should be at fifty-fifty. And, um, that Jake and team got it to as close as they could get, but one of them is, was, um, ten, and so those will be replaced as well. Um, and the microbiological bugs were measured at twenty-six hundred on May twenty-ninth. Um, and so two thousand was the target, we're there, um, you can have too many bugs. We're in the process of optimizing what the right number of bugs should be, um, but that's also part of the, the art, um, of the art and science of, um, managing wastewater treatment plant. Engineer operator Robert Flores is making a drawing show on all the modifications done and proposed to submit to the E C and D O H for approval. Uh, the flow out of the discharge pipe is clear and steady. I think you've all seen this, so. I'm happy to show you my little, my little video, I'll show it at the end. Um, regarding odor issues, in May, we had four odor complaints, two on the same day at the same time. So on May first, um, at twenty-one Smith Street, six twenty-five A M, ten minutes, Van Bollum. Um, May tenth, thirty-eight Cambridge and twenty Smith, um, eight thirty, eight forty-five P M. Um, smells like sewer, right, maybe, so it's clearly the same, um, the same complaint. And then on, on May twenty-first, twenty Amherst at eight forty-five, had a sewer smell. That was a little confusing, because twenty Amherst is two streets in, um, from the wastewater treatment plant, so we're not quite in. The sewer was, uh, checked, um, and there didn't appear to be any issues, and so it's a little unclear what, what might have caused that one. Um, the odor issue seemed to come when there was a surge of wastewater going through the wastewater treatment plant, which is what was happening on five one and five ten. Um, uh, I actually, I just mentioned that. Uh, it remains to be seen, but so far, especially with the old plant now back in operation, the odor complaints have reduced, and the odor doesn't appear to last long. Uh, we have, we've had one odor complaint so far this month. Um, however, they discovered that there was a local individual sewage tank that was being pumped, that was being pumped out. So that, that is not from the, our wastewater treatment plant. So as of, you know, June ninth, we haven't had any odor complaints in the month of June, so. Exactly.
I agree.
Like I'm with. Um, regarding the concerns of the wetlands and erosion of the subtributaries, D E C sent a team from their restoration group to do a site visit of the environmental easement area on, on the wastewater treatment plant parcel, um, on May fifteenth. This site is located on the parcel owned by the village, where the wastewater treatment plants are located. D E C followed up with a letter dated June second, responding to questions about the notice of violation, C D's permit renewal, wet, wetland concerns, cursed property cleanup, environmental remediation, uh, reporting on their, reporting on their site visits and health concerns. Uh, they indicated that they did not observe any erosion around the wastewater treatment plant at all. They also reported that during the remedial program, it was determined that this site did not pose a significant threat, and further sampling and remediation, uh, are not planned at this time. The contaminant source area was removed, um, and this was in two thousand and six, and any residual contaminant concentrations in the wetland, in the wetland were detected below the residential soil cleanup objectives and sediment guidance values. We had our third public information meeting on June fifth, where the above information was shared with the public. Graphs of the lab results for the wastewater treatment plants were shared from twenty-twenty-one, when the village acquired the old plant, through May twenty-twenty-five. Uh, a time, well, I, I, I need to, I, I did not share the timeline of odor complaints and action taken. Um, will be shared. I have them, I have it, I reviewed it, but I didn't put it into an actual timeline. Um, I also have met with and received operator proposals from two companies, and other companies said they were too busy. Uh, we will reach out to one or two more companies before we present a recommendation to the board. They have been sampling legally since the beginning of April, and will continue until we have several useful complaints. Uh, so that, um, we do have a sewer report. Um. Uh, but in the packet, um, I think it's from, I think it was a D M R, that's from April. The flow, the flow was good, yeah, I mean, that, in April, the, all, all of the, we were out of compliance, it was just better. Um, uh, so April, April was not a, not a good month.
Hmm.
May, May was better at the end, um.
And is it gonna take, are we gonna get them after this, through April's report? Is that normal, that we get it two months after fact?
Yes, unfortunately, um, that was what we were receiving, um, haven't yet asked the question of whether or not we can.
I, like, I'm, I'm working on it now, but I can't, I'm not, I, I'm waiting for tests for the twenty eighth, so.
Right, yeah, right.
And then, and D M Rs aren't due till the twenty-eighth of the month. Got it, okay.
So our timing is off. Um, so I think, you know, we, we know that we have an issue with our discharge. I would say that, um, you know, how we are going today is, uh, is a enormous difference from where we were. Okay, so that, any, any other questions at this point on the wastewater, on the, sort of? Okay, moving on, um, personnel. Um, I can report that Angela Dorris, who's our payroll account clerk, is planning to retire in mid-August. The plan is to hire a replacement, it will still be a part-time position. Um, now that we have, um, our new treasurer, Mary Bethy's with us, who's now full-time, the physician will, will officially report to the treasurer going forward. Um, and I will hopefully have a report on, um, how to put that, um, job placement online. Uh, if you know anybody who has A D P payroll experience, um, see whether, let us know. Or send them, send them our way, we'll be posting, posting the job soon. Um, we are water projects, financing. We have received confirmation of the additional financing. Uh, closing date is set for June twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth. We will finalize all projects after that, only small punchless items remain outstanding. I believe this week, the, um, annual inspection of the, uh, tank, so tower, um, for tank, tank, um, on Tower Street is going to get its, um, its inspection, to make sure that everything is good here later. Um, sewer project one, this is the new wastewater treatment plant. The major outstanding item is the embalade, we are close, um, don't have the final yet. I'm not gonna predict anymore when that might be, should be, should be soon. Um, there is still one final M W B E report from Carver to be filed with E S C. Um, the January through March twenty-five report was filled out by Carver, but they didn't make it a final report, so there will be at least one more. Um, I don't know of any reason why the next one shouldn't be their final report, but that is, uh, that's on them. Uh, Benner Road Coalition, um, I, I, they may call themselves the Sock Hill Coalition, which is just, for me, it's a little confusing, because we have the Sock Hill Watershed Committee, which is different than the Coalition, and the Coalition is related to a subtributary and tributary of the Sock Hill, so I refer to it as the Benner Road Coalition, um, I will confirm with them. Uh, but the town supervisor, um, and I met, had a second meeting on May twenty-third with a smaller group from this Coalition, which is a group of local residents that live around the subtributary and tributary to the Sock Hill, into which our wastewater treatment plant discharge flows. The Coalition invited Dr. Christopher Solomon, whose expertise is in aquatic and ecosystem ecology, and the fish and other organisms that live in them. He indicated that sewer breakdowns break down over time naturally, so the non-compliant discharge from the wastewater treatment plant, once corrected, should clear up with time. We discussed several brand possibilities for future applications to consider ways to study and enhance the health of the wetlands in that area. Um, sewer project two, um, the Benner Road Coalition and subsequent, we several residents have requested the village rescind the resolution adopting a negative declaration after completing the full environmental assessment form on July fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. I have reviewed this with our land use attorney, and have forwarded it to the engineers for their review on this one. Um, and just as a reminder, the, um, environmental assessment forms for a future project, many of the concerns from the Coalition are related to the operations of the plant. It is obviously assumes proper operation of the plant, um, and so that is, that is part of the, um, the review. Um, I, I certainly am respectful of the request and want to, want to take it seriously and give a proper response. Um, I submitted a request to the New York State, um, Department of Environmental Conservation for a freshwater wetlands jurisdictional determination on June second. The estimated time for a response is ninety days. Um, this is a formal assessment conducted by D E C to determine if an area meets the criteria for classification as a regulated freshwater wetland under the Freshwater Wetlands Act, the ready of, um, newer regulations that have been put in place. Um, so I believe for ninety days would be, what, September? Um, the Sock Hill Watershed Committee did not meet in May. Uh, the Red Hook Library had their May board meeting, May fifteenth. They reviewed the meeting room policy, expenses through April were on target, revenue is ahead, but that is due to the lopsided nature of receiving funds, and get them in a lump from the town and from the school. The director reported on many activities and actions on goals. For more information, you can find their board packet on the library's website. redhooklibrary.org backslash board of trustees. Their next board meeting will be on Wednesday, June eighteenth, at six-thirty, not Thursday, because that's Juneteenth. Public spaces, uh, Abraham's Park, so I met with Ash Ricard, who's currently chair of the Public Spaces Initiative. We discussed the structure and charge of this committee. We have a first draft of a resolution creating this. We have a first draft of a resolution creating this Public Spaces Committee. After further review with Ash, I will bring this resolution to the board for review and discussion. And then the Climate Smart Test Force, we've been through the resolution, and the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June twelfth, at four P M in the Village Hall Conference Room. There is a request to include our virtual option, and now that we've passed the resolution, we will add a virtual option to that, to that meeting. And that is all that I have to report on. So Deputy Mayor, Terrell.
Not in order that I. Okay, Red It Together meets every first Thursday of the month. This month's meeting took place at the Bard's Berenger House on June fifth at noon. Various community groups and organizations shared updates and upcoming events. Of note was that this week Duchess County Family Services, which had secured a lease at the former Pet Country location in Rhinebeck, lost that lease due to the building's owners relinquishing the property to their lender. D C F S is currently looking for a space that they can build out with four thousand to five thousand square feet and ample parking and infrastructure to support offices and community spaces.
If I can just add, the reason why the Pet Country location is important is because they were required to upgrade the sewer system.
And that was too expensive for the owner.
The one who was going to purchase.
Got it. So that is. Yeah, and hopefully they find a space in our region, because it's really exciting. Yeah. Have a location up here. Okay. The Red Hook Central School District is hosting a Red Hook Brief Conversation with author Lenora Skancy on June seventeenth at seven P M in the high school auditorium. There was an exhibit advert, which closed June eighth in collaboration with the middle school in historic Red Hook entitled It Takes a Village. I went and saw it. It was amazing. I don't know if anyone else went and saw it. It was really great. The V F W Post seven seven six five is offering space to regionally-based audiologists, sorry, which has been a difficult service for veterans to access locally. Penna T V has recorded the Memorial Day Parade and Service in Memorial Park. We'll be posting it on their website soon. The town is celebrating fifty years of Town Rec Park Commission, and their summer camp program, Summer Clay, registration opens on Saturday at seven and fourteenth at Town Hall. Red Hook Rotary has raised over eight thousand dollars in scholarships to go toward local students, and the Fisher Center has a large lineup of summer performances. The Red Hook Education Foundation will be hosting their annual fundraiser at the Seagull Tent on Friday, June twentieth. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Indigenous History Project. We have met every first Thursday of the month at seven P M in the Village Hall Conference Room. Students' meeting was canceled since it conflicted with the village sewer info session on June fifth. Linda Duval and I have scheduled a Zoom meeting with historian Heather Borzil on June seventeenth to discuss progress on the Indigenous History Project. Town of Red Hook Comptess Plan. The town committee held an initial meeting on May twelfth, sort of patterns of progress, did an introductory presentation, and committee members and liaisons introduced themselves to the group. The committee will be meeting monthly from seven thirty P M to nine P M on the fourth Tuesday, although there was no monthly meeting during the month of May. Village of Red Hook Communications. The village has switched to the website, which is currently at dot gov domain. You can now enter redhookvillage.gov to visit the village's website. At the request of our interim building clerk, we updated the village's building, building, yeah. The village building department webpage with a temporary building department notice, as well as publishing a newsflash that shared the temporary hour. The mayor and I met with Civic Plus account manager Mark Beasley and our client success manager, Kelsey. Cuffer? Do you remember Kelsey? Anyway. Yeah, on May twenty-first, we resumed to review the specifics of what premium website design may entail and what potential add-ons may be applicable to our situation. Each add-on customization requires requesting a dedicated quote, and they often come at substantial costs, so we've been following up about what items we can accomplish within the standard redesign level. On June fourth, we met with the same Civic Plus representatives to do a module audit meeting where Kelsey walked the mayor and I through each of the modules we're currently using, as well as the modules we may want to use in the future. For clarity, modules is a Civic Plus term used to describe each backend tool that takes dynamic content, which can be populated onto different pages through widgets and page templates. Examples of this could be the calendar, Agenda Center, or the staff directory. Each of this allow us to add and edit the information through a specific module interface designed for that subject matter, which then can be displayed throughout the site in various layouts, as allowed by the template design. There were several widgets we had not used in the past, such as activities and opinion poll and logs, that we are discussing if they conserve existing departments and initiatives moving forward. I requested a quote for the replacement banner, Red Hook Welcomes Bar Students, which will be twenty-five feet long and two feet tall, to be displayed alongside Route Nine in front of the village kiosk. And nothing new to report for village zoning review and then planning and zoning and building department. So for the zoning and planning, building permits issued seventeen. Certificates of occupancy issued, this is for April, I'm sorry. Certificates of occupancy issued one, temporary certificates of occupancy zero. Certificate of Compliance, six. And orders to remedy, zero. Stop work orders, one. Do not occupy notice, zero, and court appearances, zero. Oh, and fire inspections were four. And then for May, building permits issued eleven. Certificates of occupancy issued, zero. Temporary certificate of occupancy, zero. Certificate of Compliance, zero. And the following orders to remedy, stop work orders, do not occupy notice, and court appearances were all zero. And fire inspections as well. And then the total in, it's not revenue, but, is it considered income?
Peace.
Peace, yes. For the building department was four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents. That was for the month of May. Sorry, so the tongue was just there.
Oh, no, there was one thing that I, in your, in your report about the quotes that you're requesting. I wondered if you might consider Red Hook Welcomes You, comma, Bar Students? Just, yeah.
Yes. The more words.
Yeah, I was gonna say the more words.
Ah, it's more extensive.
But it's actually, because it's a big, huge banner, and so, and the idea is it's going to be between the, on the light poles in front of the, in the kiosk. So the more words you have, the less readable it is, because you're just, you're driving by is where you're really gonna see it.
Yes, I, yeah, I, the scale of it, I guess, it's there, but I hadn't, I hadn't imagined that.
Is it, is it more grammatically correct to do it that way?
No, no, it's fine as is. I just, you know, it just seemed like more.
Friendly?
Friendly, yeah. But if it, I mean, certainly not if it costs more or.
I don't know that it'll cost more. I don't know, I don't really have a huge opinion. But I did get the.
This came out of a discussion with, with the town and the Bard, talking about how to, it was a combination of how to remind all of us that the Bard students are coming, so that when you saw new people, that you would sort of not think, oh, I haven't seen them before. You would think, oh, I haven't seen you before. And also to give the students the sense that, you know, that we are welcoming them. And, because we looked at several different versions, and, you know, a lot of our students are coming for, have no idea what Red Hook is, so more Red Hook in there. And that we, we Red Hook are the ones who are welcoming you.
And we're gonna be welcome Red Hook. No, welcome Bard students, sorry, and not the Red Hook, but then we thought the Red Hook's important.
Because we want to make sure that they understand that it's just a generic welcome. Yeah, that Red Hook specifically is welcoming you. Given the context of wanting to create that environment of feeling welcome. So, yeah, trying to accomplish a few benefits. And I believe the town contributes enough pay for it.
Yes, I got the invoice. I have to send it to them next time.
Great.
Okay. And I believe trustee, you are next.
Okay. So here's my D P W. Here are the costs and expenses for the month of May. Please see the attached reports, the spreadsheet here. I will just go through. Our total revenue for the month of May was two thousand and seventy-eight dollars. For, that's representing tags, tags sold. For recycling, we had a total of, where's my recycling total? Two point one two tons of recycling. Garbage, we had seven point oh seven tons of garbage. And then costs for that, so garbage altogether total was nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Fuel cost of fifty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. A recurring fee for the Welsh Royal Dumpster of two hundred and eleven and twelve dollars. Our total costs for the month of May were one thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Just a quick question. As I understood it, with the dumpster, we were allowed to sort of hang on, not make a trip across to U K every, every week. And clearly, we must have just missed April. We must have taken a trip right after the end of April.
Yes, because it's quite a bit higher.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like kind of every other month for the last couple of months.
Yeah.
Interesting. Great. Thank you.
Yes, of course. That's the last one for the fiscal year.
Keep the amount of battery. Sorry. Just talking about the sitting garbage, whether or not it's lighter.
Okay, so I just have the usual, all of this is referenced on the website for anyone looking later on. Our usual trash and recycling pickup, trash must be out before five A M on Monday morning. Cardboard bundles should be bound together with string or tape if a recycling placed loose within a littered tub or bin. Our recycling pickup alternates between yellow and blue. More information online also. Village brush slash yard waste pickup are scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. Our reminders to residents to please avoid creating long-term piles, to put piles out just prior to pickup week. I myself am not always compliant, but it is a good thing for the D P W. Lawn clippings and brush should be set out in separate piles. Do you place piles on the edge of your lawn and not in the sidewalk or street? Piles should not include construction debris, garbage, dumps, and/or branches larger than six inches in diameter, and piles should please be limited to six foot by six foot by six foot. Brush and leaf piles should not cover water or sewer shut offs or on top of fiber optic ground walls. Bulk item tags are available for purchase at the clerk's office if you need to get rid of a mattress or other large item. Service is very affordable. Please contact. The clerk's office. Residents can also drop off household compost at the town recycling center, but our Red Hook Village compost program is almost ready for takeoff. So for more information, please contact the village clerk or me, Frances who at redhookvillage.gov. We have no income in scrap metal for the month of, reported in the month of May, but our total revenue for the fiscal year is five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents since the program's inception. Donations have yielded a total of fifty-five thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents. Proceeds from the program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment. For the public works department, residents and businesses interested in donating metal may contact the village clerk's office to schedule a pickup.
Just to them, FYI, in the budget, we have budgeted for forty-five hundred, so coming in at effectively fifty-five hundred with a nice, overage.
That's, yeah, that's very nice. Okay, yeah, streetlight complaints. If you notice a streetlight out in the village, please contact Central Hudson. Potholes, you can notify the village of potholes on Village Road by calling the clerk's office or filling out the report, a concern form at redhookvillage.gov/concern. And I have my new section, which I'm gonna call Foreman Appreciation or Giving Jake His Flowers. Thank you, Jake, for coordinating with and New York State D O T to address a malfunction with the crossing lights at Morgan's Way and South Broadway. Thank you also to Nicole Rogers for noticing and flagging the problem. Have you, have a highway-related issue? Please contact Frances who at redhookvillage.gov or the village clerk. Sincerely.
Just to them, FYI, that cross light has been a problem for quite a while. And, and I know that Jake has tried many different ways to get out of it. So before this meeting, I went down, I parked my car, and I hit the button, and I crossed the street. And not only is it, because it wasn't stopping, it was literally flashing all the time. So Jake turned it off because he thought that would be better to have it not flashing. Not only does it turn off, but it also says, yellow lights are flashing in English and Spanish.
Oh, man, I didn't know about the Spanish.
You gotta, you gotta go have a little field trip. And it's, I don't think.
Well, I had to live, my office was right over one.
I live right next to it. It's quite loud.
It's just so loud every time. You don't hear it.
Anyway, I, you know, kudos to Nicole for bringing it up again, and kudos to Jake. He worked very hard to get to the end result.
Ownership dispute.
Oh, an ownership dispute. The F O T said it was theirs, and then they said it was ours. And they took the gate and have a key, so Jake gave them the key, and then they couldn't find it, and I mean, it's.
Oh, yes.
It's a story. You probably heard the whole time.
I did.
So a huge, that's why I had to go look. I'm like, really?
Yeah.
It's fixed?
I, yeah.
Yeah, well, well done.
Okay, and then, yeah, my village screen report is just essentially what the mayor has appointed officers and members. Just saying that the committee's already at work on projects they intend to bring before the board in the coming weeks. We hope to now offer more than two tree plantings a year. The committee is excited about that. If you are interested as a resident in befriending new neighbors while beautifying where you live, please contact me, Frances who at redhookvillage.gov. You may also contact the clerk at eight four five seven five eight ten eighty-one. Sincerely. Great.
Okay. Okay. So we've met. The water department. There was no meetings since the last four meetings, but I can report on usage and testing of those. In the month of May, the water department customers used almost nine million gallons of water. I'm gonna spray the full number. For an average consumption of pretty close to three hundred thousand gallons per. Three locations were sampled on May twenty-first. All three locations were negative for coliform and E coli. The free chlorine residual mass ranged from point three five milligrams per liter to point zero one milligrams per liter. As a reminder, there are one thousand milligrams per liter of water, so truly microscopic. Language access grant. In keeping with what I said at last month's workshop, that equipment was purchased that will allow anyone attending a public meeting to get simultaneous interpretation via Bluetooth headphones linked Chromebooks that connect to users with a remote interpreter who will access the meeting via the village Zoom account. Village has five sets of headphones and five Chromebooks, each with a protective sleeve taped as soon as they arrive. I mean, the Chromebook and the headphone, the sleeves are in. The full cost of this equipment is reimbursable by Duchess County via the village's make grant to provide greater language access to village information assistance.
We should, we should see if we can find some sort of targeted meeting to check it out.
Well, I was hoping that the very first time, I'm gonna set them all up, but then we would use them for a board meeting to test before we hire interpreters.
And then it would be fun to do maybe just some sort of session where people can try it out.
Yeah, no, I agree. A hundred percent, yeah. So school speed zone, village-wide twenty-five mile per hour project. I've taken over these initiatives begun by trustee, former trustee Kim Roger Ricard. After reading the draft report from Creighton Manning, which is a consultant company that did.
Engineering firm.
Engineering firm. That did the traffic study, I've set up a meeting with Ken Burson, the village's contact. I'll be asking Sir Burson about how weekly advisory changes by D O T might affect the draft report conclusions and suggest a final report. The next step to move that school speed going forward is for the village to pass a resolution in favor of establishing one, which would be submitted to D O T allowing for Letter of Support from Schools. Schools are highly expressed enthusiasm for the project and provided I have a letter for volunteer workshop. for volunteer workshop, I'll present a resolution on that topic so we can get it moving again.
All right. Uh, can we make a report on that? You mentioned we have a utility bill.
Oh, yes, sorry. Um, I didn't know this was part of this. Um, so I will now report on the utility building, building for both the water and food department for May twenty-twenty-five. Um, utility bills issued zero dollars. Um, penalties slash fines charges issued one thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents. Utility payments received twenty-four thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and forty-three cents. Accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of June first, twelve thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-seven. Thank you, Jen.
Great, and, um, in the next round, the bills will go out in the end of June. Okay. Shall I first? Shall I first? Okay. Um, hi, that is, does anybody have any general business they would like to add?
There was no progress.
Um.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. Thanks. Are we going to do a pride flag?
Oh, shoot, we forgot about that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, we had talked at our workshop meeting, we, I knew I was forgetting something. We had talked at our, at our workshop meeting about, um, pride flag and how to address that and, um, the whole concept of wanting to make sure that we are, we use government speech so that we are, um, that we can determine what flags we want to fly. Um, and, um, and some work has been done, some discussions have been had. Um, given the timing, I would like to make a motion that we fly the pride flag from Friday, June, um, June twentieth through Monday, June twenty-third. Um, the, um, the pride, um, parade and festival is on the twenty-second, um, because I would like to, I would like to add to the wonderful flags that we see around the village, um, for the Purleton celebration.
And with the proviso that we will.
With the proviso that we will continue to have a conversation, um, I'm working to schedule a, a legal session with our village attorney so that the, all of the board can have conversations about it because it's, it's complicated. Um, it, it is not as, it's not straightforward, but I also think that it's important for us to, um, to wrestle with it and to think about it. And it's an opportunity, as I see it, as a way to, there are many different ways that we can show that we support all of the different people that we have in the village. Um, and, and so I think there's an opportunity to be thoughtful and frankly, schedule, schedule, you know, we won't, we've got the, the Tree City USA, which is a great flag, and I think there are opportunities to, um, to have some, some different possibilities throughout the year, but I, so, and definitely something that we need to have further discussions on. But given the timing, I would like to, um, I would like to move the motion, um, to fly the pride flag, um, for the, for that Friday through Monday.
At the rear, in the rear.
At the rear, the rear.
Right, right. Are we doing a discussion ahead of time or?
Sure, we can discuss.
Yeah, only just as we, you know, we did have some discussion, um, on this in the, in the workshop. Um, my own, I, I hadn't realized, and this is apologies to everyone, especially Amy, that I hadn't understood that we, at the workshop, that we were speaking specifically about this as are making government speech, about, you know, flying this. And I just feel personally that getting into making that, having that be the reason that we're flying is that we are speaking, leads me to the question of, well, who are we speaking to? Or who are we, you know, like, there's just, for, you know, I know it's a week, but there are, there are many, I, you know, there are many communities that we could be, could be speaking to. Sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little emotional because it is Juneteenth, and I feel like if we were, if we were going to speak to something, there's that, but no, I mean, that's just even being the most obvious because in the workshop, I didn't even know that there was a Juneteenth flag, but given that there is, and given that there, there's so many things going on in the country right now that, um, that also affect us locally, um, I just, I would be more comfortable if we did have the policy in place that determines either we have a calendar of flags that we intend to fly during the year, um, rather than having one, I mean, and also if it's a, I know that, I happen to know that we do possess the flag already, and, and we flew it last year, but I just, I, yeah, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with the idea of this being the village, village speaking, um, that, yeah, that.
But to be clear, would you be comfortable if we had a calendar that included multiple flags? Or is it in general, you don't? I mean, I'm just clarifying.
No, thank you.
Thank someone you just asked.
Yeah, yeah, it is really that I, I, I don't think we should be in the business of speaking as the government for, for our constituents, like, it's just, that's just how I feel. Um, because when you do fly one, then you, you open up the possibility of, I mean, just by flying one and it doesn't matter what it is, you know, someone or someone might, might, and would be within their rights to say, well, why not this flag? And I, yeah, I just feel like if we're presenting as a board, that, that we, we need a, there needs to be kind of a fairness policy as far as what we're, we're flying and as, yeah.
But to be clear again, your definition of a fairness policy is that we not fly flags? Because, I mean, I just wanted, like, I'm not trying to, but.
No.
If you're saying we should have a fairness policy.
Yeah.
But your definition of fairness is we shouldn't make them?
No, 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 that's what, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that in this, as of what was proposed, I don't feel that we should be in the business of, of making government speech, but were we to, I, you know, certainly would see a, you know, if we did have a policy and something that was communicated to the public as to this is what we're flying, this is, you know, that I would be comfortable with, but as I said in the workshop, that takes time. Someone has to go through a calendar. We need to purchase flags. We, you know, these are all things. Um, and I, I had mentioned, and I forget if it was at the workshop or just in, in speaking, um, that there is precedent for, I would never want this to happen in our village, but in the village of Cold Spring, they had a very similar, um, in twenty-twenty-two, it was a huge scandal over their decision to make, um, government speech, which they had to pull back from. And, I mean, I can.
I thought it was the opposite. I thought that they decided to fly no flags, and then they got accused of.
No.
The article defending, that's what it was about, so that's.
Well, I think it was both. I mean, I think they flew the flag, and then there were, there was a reaction, and then they flew no flags, and there was a react, I mean, it was.
Correct, correct. It was just murky.
Complicated, yeah. And that's what, the, the, the law is not black and white either. I mean, it's.
Sure, sure. There can be, yeah.
Um, I, I, I guess I would, um, you're right, it takes time, and I think that we should take the time. I also, I also feel that with the pride, which is why I'm, I myself am comfortable with the four days, because I think it's acknowledging the festival that's going to be happening. Um, and, and I think it's, um, I would like to just have an extra something that shows that a community that's under.
But can I?
And, and it doesn't mean that there aren't others, for sure. I guess it's because we did it last year, I, I worry that the implication of not doing it this year would be also speech, and I, I don't want that to be.
But to, to backhook to the, to.
No. And the, and people in the community.
I see. But, but I, I guess I, I'm, what is it about the flag in itself? Like, we're hosting a, a pride parade.
We're not hosting one.
I mean.
Well, we are, we are, um, yeah, we need to figure out what the word is. I mean, what is happening, we're not hosting it.
No, okay, but.
But we are, we are.
Forget what, I don't have the technology.
Facilitating.
But, but, okay, I just mean in the same way that we have the VFW, the Memorial Day Parade, and we have, I don't mean hosting, like, we're, you know.
Sure.
We're not paying, obviously, they have vendors, and they have workshops, and they have a lot of things that, you know, that, that we're not providing. What I mean is that we, what we are providing, I'm assuming, is police services, we're providing cleanup, we're providing, I mean, these are services that we're providing.
Yes.
And it's a very public event. We, I, I believe, as of last year, we have been invited to walk in the parade, so I don't think there's any question, there's any doubt as to our intentions as a village and, you know, so my only, my only, um, concern is just the use of the, the village building for government speech, that's all, and.
Sorry, am I interrupting you?
No.
So we are also ordering that welcome bar student banner, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's important that we're showing that we, we care about their experience and that they're valuable.
The Narcan machine.
Yes.
Yeah, sure, that, I mean, I don't feel that those are similar, but come on.
Okay, for me, it's similar. I mean, I have people in my family.
Oh, I don't mean you.
Oh, no, but, but, but I mean, there are people in my family that have, you know, felt not welcome, and felt that their family's not welcome. It's not just, you know, individuals, it's their whole family, their kids. We want everyone to feel welcome and valued in the village. And I think I, when we marched, it was a few, it was too hot, goddamn hot stuff. But it was such a beautiful thing to be part of, and I was very proud of it happening here in the village. Um, so, in my opinion, as, as a vote, um, I really think it's an important thing that, that we try to make the village as welcoming, as open, as, you know, as, we include people, and that's part of, you know, and I do think it's, it's a valuable part of our government speech to say that we make efforts for people that we feel like, you know.
But, but there it is, right there, right? Like, it's people that we feel are.
But the same thing with language access, right? Is we, we identify that there, you know, and we make the efforts that we feel like make an impact and difference for.
And we, we do absolutely, and these, these are the things that I feel are the best about the village, is that we, like with the Narcan machine, these are all things that are, you know, not, they're not symbolic, they're real things, that people use the, the language access, the Narcan, you know, incoming, hopefully Narcan machine, they're not, they're not a flag, they're not.
I would argue that the visibility provided by a flag is not symbolic, not to people who feel like they're not welcome. So while a flag may be a symbol of something, um, I think that, um, like, being able to see yourself or to see a community that is important to you, uh, represented in a public space, especially at a time when a lot of government speech by other levels of government is being used to repress and suppress and harass, um, I think that that's not symbolic. I think that that has actual, um, impact on people's lives directly.
Sure, but again.
We can disagree.
Of course we can disagree, that's, that's not in question. I'm, I'm just, yeah, I, yeah. I think I, yeah, I, I, as I said, I think in the workshop, or but maybe subsequently, I just would like to register my concerns with Jen, and I can do that, and so she doesn't have to, um.
It's, it's recorded, so we'll have to.
Well, I know, but I don't.
I would, my, me saying, like, with the proviso that we are looking, I, I agree that we should be using the privilege of ha- having government speech to be sure that we are being inclusive, um, and I don't think we should fly only one flag. Um, I mean, the POW MIA flag is not a government flag, and we've applied natural wealth, but I think that it's worthwhile looking at across all, but there is a time suck development here.
But it's the, I mean, yeah, is the POW MIA flag one that we have purchased and we need?
It was so long ago.
It's been there a long time.
I mean, I feel like that's not, we're talking about this.
It's a, it's a nonprofit flag.
I understand, but it's, it's pole we're talking about, not that one.
But they're both government speech.
I mean, they're both our pole.
They're both our pole. Anything we fly is our endorsement. I'm not against flying a POW MIA flag, I'm just saying we have precedent, and so with that, and the proviso that we're going to review it more closely to consider other flags, that's my opinion.
And I, and I guess I would have added, from my, from my standpoint, I think, um, I, again, given that last year was the first pride event in, in Red Hook, we chose to fly it for the entire month of June. Um, I would like, I myself would like to fly it for the, the, you know, around the event as an additional support for the activity. I also recognize that, um, as we discuss further, I think it's important to have that discussion and say what should or shouldn't we do with that pole? And so if, if we get to this point next year and we don't have a policy, I would be perfectly comfortable saying we're not going to fly anything. Um, I'm less comfortable now because I would have liked to have told Deco Pride two months ago that we're not going to fly the flag, and it's not because we're not supporting it, it's because we have, we have made an active choice. And I just, and that's where I'm more concerned that the timing is such that it could be interpreted wrong, and that, I, I think this is a moment where I don't want to have that interpretation in the wrong direction, um, is where I'm coming from for this particular motion, and I very much think that we, as a board, should review, discuss, um, sort of the notion of the policy, um, and that's sort of where I come about. So I think we've, we've kind of all laid out. Um, I will re- put forth, again, my motion, uh, I make a motion that we fly the pride flag, second, from Friday, the twentieth to Monday, the twenty-third. We have a second with Amy. Um, I don't know if there's any, I mean, obviously, further discussion could be had. Um, if not, we'll take a vote. Amy?
Hi.
Um, no, Corke?
Hi.
Fran?
It's a no for me.
And it's a no for me. So that does pass it, um, so we will, we'll have to slide up for the four days.
And also, I think it'd be good that we have the sense sometimes that we should, we should welcome it and.
This was a very healthy discussion, and I think it was, and, and thank you, Fran, for, I thank all of you for, for having, having this discussion, and it's important.
My computer died, I'm, I didn't know. I didn't.
Okay. We can still, we can still do it. And I, my apologies for not putting it on the, on the agenda, it was in.
I, I meant to do it.
I, you know, whatever going on. Uh, we do have time for public comments. Any public members like to make a comment? I might have to make a comment that I don't know that we're going to allow that hat in this room.
Oh, right, son. Pushing the limits here, I don't know.
We're not crazy now, anyway.
It doesn't matter, they, you know, they, they talked for a long time before they didn't, and then they, and then they did. Anyway, I digress.
Uh, we have.
Well, there's no one on there.
No.
If you're watching, you're recording, it's great.
Um, we have no executive session, however, I do need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Mary Beth, it's going to be, uh, hopes to check by noon tomorrow, so, um, either tonight or tomorrow, please, please, uh, come.
There, right here.
No, right there.
We should vote to close the meeting, right?
Motion to adjourn. And, uh, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1797.83]